Sheriff Coroner, Coroner Public Community Forum to receive information on Immigration and Customs Enforcement, also known as ICE, access to individuals. And we have presenting.
Lieutenant Susan Jensen.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you Chairman Blazer, members of the Board. I'm Lieutenant Susan Jensen. I'm here on behalf of Sheriff Anderson and the Sheriff's Department. I'm here to give you a presentation on Government Code Section 4283, which is also known as the Truth Act, and Government Code Section 4284.6, also known as the Values Act. There's two parts to the Truth Act. The first part went into effect January 1st, 2017, and established certain requirements for how law enforcement processes certain requests we receive from U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, also known as ICE. The second part of the Truth Act went into effect January 1st, 2018, and it requires local law enforcement to conduct a community forum on an annual basis in which we inform the Board of Supervisors about our compliance with the Truth Act over the last year. This is why I'm here today in front of the Board to talk about what our compliance was with the Truth Act for 2023. Before I review the statistical data regarding our compliance, I would like to review the requirements of the Truth Act. The Truth Act states that ICE, if ICE requests or seeks access to a person in custody or detained by local law enforcement, ICE must make their request in writing. In turn, we are mandated to notify the person of the request reviewed by ICE and notify the person if we, Yuba County Sheriff's Department, intend to comply with the request. This compliance with Government Code Section 7283.1. The Truth Act also mandates we track all records related to ICE access and all communication with ICE, or public records, under the Public Records Act. The Truth Act identifies four ways in which ICE may seek access to a person in local custody on local charges. The first one is an interview. ICE must seek this in writing. When we receive that request, we will notify the inmate of the interview request, their right to refuse the interview, and their right to counsel. This interview is strictly voluntary, and the inmate may have an attorney present. If they already have an attorney, we must also provide written notification to that attorney. We're also obligated to provide the inmate with a written consent form that explains the purpose of the interview, that the interview is voluntary, and that he or she may decline to be interviewed, or may choose to be interviewed only with his or her attorney present. The second way in which ICE may seek access to a person in local custody on local charges is that ICE may request a release date for a person that is in our custody. Again, this request must be in writing, and the inmate must be informed of the request. SB 54, which is the California Values Act, went into effect January 1st, 2018, impacted when we can provide a release date to ICE. We can now only provide a release date to ICE if the inmate has certain criminal history. That criteria is too long to mention, but if you refer to California Government Code 7282.5 and 7284.6 (A) (C), it will explain the criteria. Most of these are all violent crimes. The third way for ICE to request an ICE hold. ICE may request to place a hold on a local inmate, requesting we maintain custody of the person beyond their local release date. This is to give ICE the opportunity to make arrangements to take the person into their custody. ICE historically did this by providing us a Department of Homeland Security Form I-247-A, commonly known as a detainer. SB 54 prohibits us from honoring a hold based on a detainer. We can now only honor a hold from ICE based on a judicial warrant based on probable cause, and that warrant must be signed by a magistrate. Lastly, ICE may request to transfer custody. ICE may request that the facility help facilitate transfer of a local custody to the custody of ICE. SB 54 now requires we can help facilitate a transfer of custody if that person has the same criminal history as previously mentioned in the release date section, and there is a judicial warrant, same as the hold request. In the year 2023, we received zero requests from ICE for interviews. We received zero ICE detainer DHS Form I-247-A. We received zero requests for transfer of custody. We received six release date requests from ICE. We did not comply with five of these requests due to them not meeting the requirements listed under SB 54. One of these requests is still pending, based on the court case still pending. For the California Values Act pursuant to Government Code Section 7284.6, all law enforcement agencies that participate in a joint law enforcement task force for which a California law enforcement agency has agreed to dedicate personnel or resources on an ongoing basis will be required to submit a report annually to the Department of Justice. For the purpose of this mandate, joint law enforcement task force is defined as at least one California law enforcement agency collaborating, engaging, or partnering with at least one federal enforcement agency in investigating federal or state crimes. The designated law enforcement agency must report the total number of people arrested for immigration enforcement purposes as part of this required reporting to DOJ. Under the Values Act, no California law enforcement agency shall participate in the arrest of a person for immigration purposes even as part of that task force unless the arrest meets the conditions of Government Code Section 7284.6 subdivision B-1. We submitted the Values Act, we submitted the Values Act Task Force Participation to DOJ on January 9th of 2024. The total number of people arrested for immigration enforcement purposes is zero. That concludes this presentation on our compliance with the Truth Act for 2023. Thank you, and are there any questions?
Is there a condensed version of that?
I could gladly make a condensed version for next year.
The condensed version was they asked for our help six times, and five times we told them no, and we made zero arrests. That's the condensed version.
So there were inmates that ICE wanted. So.
Yeah, so we received, we received requests for a release date from ICE, so they didn't say whether they wanted him or not, but they did request a release date, which would lead you to believe that they had intent to want him. However, we didn't provide the release date in five of them because it was, it did not meet the criteria for violent crimes. And the one is still, we're waiting to see if he gets convicted. The court case is still pending.
But if there was an agreed-on release date, then potentially ICE could pick them up.
As long as the crimes they're convicted of meet the criteria of SB 54, then we would be able to provide that release date, correct?
Okay. So we do work with ICE if all the Ts are crossed, et cetera.
As long as it complies with the requirements for SB 54 as far as the criminal history record, then we will comply with their request.
Yeah. Well, that's good for me. Anybody else have any questions?
If you can open the public hearing.
So we can open this up as a public hearing if there's any input from the public. Seeing none, I guess we will close the public hearing. And there's nothing to vote on. This is information only unless somebody else has a question. I think we're good. All right, so we're going into the cost accounting hearing. Natalie, can you read that off?
Yes. "If a party to a hearing before the Yuba County Board of Supervisors seeks to challenge in court a decision of the Board pursuant to Yuba County Ordinance Code Sections 1.16.070 and California Code of Civil Procedure Sections 1094.6, any application for judicial review of such decision must be filed in the appropriate court, not later than the 90th day following the date on which the Board decision was made."
Can you go ahead and read off 104/2024?
Yes. "Community Development and Services, Public Hearing, Cost Accounting Hearing to Determine Enforcement Costs and Penalties to Be Assessed Against Property Located at 2208 McGowan Parkway Number A, Oliver's, California 95961, APN 014-201-013, and Authorize a Special Tax Assessment and Abatement Lean."
Thank you.
Hi, good morning Chair, members of the Board. I guess it's afternoon now. I'm used to a morning session, so good afternoon. Jeremy Strang with Code Enforcement today. Yeah, so as introduced, the hearing before your Board is a cost accounting hearing for 2208A McGowan Parkway. This hearing is not an appeal hearing regarding the determination of a public nuisance. Because an appeal was not timely filed, that determination is final, and any questions related to the nuisance cannot be considered. So essentially today, that leaves you with three things that you're limited to considering. The first one is, are those administrative and enforcement costs and penalties as reflected in the attached cost accounting accurate and reasonable? That cost accounting is part of your packet today, and it's labeled detachment B. I'll also have a photo here in a PowerPoint. The second item would be that should the property tax bill be placed on the property tax bill as a special assessment? And then lastly, should the abatement costs or administrative and enforcement costs and penalties, all of them, be recorded as a lien? So please accept my staff report today, my written staff report. I believe that staff report provides you all the information that you need in order to arrive at your decision today. I do have a PowerPoint for you that will highlight the case. It'll show you some illustrative examples of the violations and go through some important dates. So part of this, these are factors that your Board will use in using your discretion to determine the reasonableness of what we're bringing today. These are contained in the Ordinance Code, and you can see them, the danger to the public health, safety, and welfare, culpability of those involved, the willfulness of the violation, the effect of the violation on surrounding properties and community, the length of time the violation existed, the reasonableness of corrective action, recidivism, and credibility of testimony. I will tell you that this item and the next item are both on the same property, dealing with the same individual, and so certainly recidivism, willfulness, and culpability probably will play into your decision today. So these are the important dates and actions. So you can see there on January of 2021, the 15th, we received a citizen complaint, and we opened up a case. In February of 2021, we performed our initial inspection. We found a significant amount of junk, trash, and debris. We found occupied recreational vehicles, tents. There were individuals occupying those as well as some families. This property had been subject to abatement previously in a previous year, and so there were no plumbing or electrical or even a dwelling on this property. We found discharging sewage to the ground surface as well as the burning of trash. So March 12th, staff issued a notice in order to abate public nuisance to the owner, which is a trust, I believe. And on March 27th, the appeal period for that expired, and the administrative penalty began to accrue. You can see May 6th, we performed a compliance inspection to see if there were any efforts to remove or abate the nuisance. Having seen none, on the 1st of June, we sought an inspection warrant that was signed by the Honorable Judge Deborah Givens. And on June 2nd and 3rd, a formal abatement of the conditions that we found happened. So this is a satellite image of the property. Nothing real glamorous here. You can see boats and RVs and some piles of junk, but this is a nicer view of after we were done. You get down at ground level, this is what we found during the inspection. You can see the inoperable vehicles and tents, general junk, trash, and debris, and personal property on the parcel there. This is another view of the tents. There's also containers of unknown contents. This is representative of the recreational vehicles that were being occupied. And then this is what the property looked like after we were complete. So in all of these cost hearings, some of you will remember, some of you may not even be aware, but I prepare, I draft findings of fact, conclusions of law, and orders for your Board to consider in coming to your recommendation. So that will be part of the recommendation here at the next slide after this one. So these are the costs that we're seeking today, $22,187.74. You can see those costs also contain, again, the administrative penalties for $5,440 and contractor costs of $7,590, including our staff time. So with that, we're recommending today that you adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and orders as written, and find the administrative and abatement costs and penalties as exhibited in the cost accounting are accurate and reasonable. Also that you order that the administrative and abatement costs in the amount of $16,747.74 be placed as a special tax assessment and placed on the property tax roll. And then lastly, order that the administrative and abatement costs and penalties in the amount of $22,187.74 be recorded as an abatement lien. Also, you may remember from, we've maybe only had one of these in last year, we do separate the administrative penalty from the other costs when it goes onto the tax bill, and that's why you're seeing them separated here. With that, any questions that you may have?
Any questions from the Board?
Yes, through the Chair.
So is that the total for the first one, and then we're going to do another one?
That's correct.
So the total's 38,000, 39,000, something like that?
The numbers that you see on your screen here are only related to this particular hearing. The next hearing will be a different set of numbers and will be in addition to this one.
But the total is how much?
For today, the total, the total costs being sought are $22,187.74.
Oh, now I'm confused.
The $22,000 is just for this abatement that occurred. Then in five minutes, he's going to go through the entire same thing he just said, repeat it all again with a different number, 20,000, 15,000, 30,000, whatever that number is. That's what they're asking. What is the number for the next one?
Great clarification Supervisor Fur.
No, that last slide said 16,000 something.
That's a subamount of this 22,000, is that correct?
Correct. So that's part of that 22,000. As I, yeah, I think I mentioned, so we removed the administrative penalty from the total, so the total's 22,000, et cetera. We removed the administrative penalties of $5,440, which is the $16,000 figure. And we separate those out because we don't place administrative penalties on the tax bill for collection with property taxes.
But we still get paid for that?
They would be, if we were able to collect, if we did collect.
Well, yes.
They would be collected at potentially two different times. So in other words, if the property tax bill was paid and they satisfied the $16,000, there would still be a recorded lien that at some date in the future, if the property were to sell, for instance, or maybe there were a bank loan that was being sought, the other amount would come up, and we would seek to collect the 5,000, the difference between the two.
Yeah, still be on the lien.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Now, do you ask for anybody rebuttal on this?
So, and I missed it at the beginning of my presentation. So with me here today, excuse me, I got a frog in my throat, I have Officers Tracy Clark and Amy Gibbs here for any questions that you may have that I can't answer. And then Chase Steele from County Council's Office is also here representing the Department for Counsel. So at this time, you would open the public hearing, I believe, and I don't believe there's anyone present that will offer anything to the contrary, but if there are.
At some point, somebody might have to be sworn in.
Yeah, so I just want to make clear that the public hearing does need to be open. And at this time, the Chairman should make a call into the record to ensure the record is clear that anybody with John Warren Vickers Senior Revocable Living Trust here today need come forward.
I did not remember that. So anybody representing the trust is welcome to come forward and state their case.
Close enough?
Through the Chair, I believe I'm supposed to administer an oath to anyone who is...
Yes. Anybody who's going to testify.
Anybody who's going to testify.
And do we have anybody going to testify? Seeing none. Moving on.
All right, so you need a motion stating all those facts, and I'll make that motion to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and orders as written by that the administrative and abatement costs and penalties as exhibited in the cost accounting are accurate and reasonable, or that the administrative and abatement costs in the amount of $16,747.74 be placed as a special tax assessment on the property tax roll, or that the administrative and abatement costs and penalties in the amount of $22,187.74 be recorded as an abatement lien with the county recorder.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any further Board comment or any public comment? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second.
And Mr. Chairman, we'll need to close the public hearing and have a roll call vote.
Okay. So now we will close the public hearing, and Natalie, we're going to have to have a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fur.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Hey Natalie, let's go to 106.
Item 106-2024, Community Development and Services, Public Hearing, Cost Accounting Hearing to Determine Enforcement Costs of Abatement to Be Assessed Against Property Located at 2208 McGowan Parkway Number A, Oliver's, California 95961, APN 014-201-013, and Authorize a Special Tax Assessment and Abatement Lean.
Good afternoon, Board. Jeremy Strang with Code Enforcement. I'm still going to cover most everything that I did in the previous hearing for the record, so bear with me as we go through this. In this instance, I still have Officers Tracy Clark and Amy Gibbs here for any technical questions that I may not be able to answer, and from County Council's Office, Chase Steele. So I will cover, this is not an appeal hearing. This is a hearing to determine costs associated with the abatement. There was no appeal filed in a timely fashion, and therefore, the determination of a public nuisance stands. You are, you're still essentially limited to the three things. That is, are the costs reasonable? And what's different in this particular cost hearing are there are no penalties being requested, so this one does not have penalties. So it's the administrative and enforcement costs, whether or not they're accurate and reasonable, should they become a special tax assessment on the property tax bill, and should a lien be recorded? So I do have a staff report. Everything is in the staff report that I believe you need for your decision today. The factors have not changed. Again, we're talking specifically the ones that will apply, probably culpability, willfulness, and recidivism. And so here are the dates that are relevant to this particular case. So September 20th, 2021, we received a citizen's complaint, and the case was opened. We performed an initial inspection, found very similar conditions to the previous case. We sought an inspection warrant, which was signed by the Honorable Judge Stephen Barrier to determine the full nature and scope of the violations. You can see there on 5/12, we did that, and that resulted on the 20th of May as a notice in order to abate public nuisance. On the July 21st, July 28th, and August 3rd, we attempted inspections to monitor progress. Seeing none, we sought a final warrant to allow for the inspection and abatement of the property. That was signed by Honorable Judge Benjamin Werschafter. And then on August 16th and 17th, formal abatement was performed. So these are the conditions that we found, again, very similar to the previous case. We had all sorts of junk, trash, debris, inoperable vehicles, recreational vehicles being occupied. Here's another view. Here's yet another view of that property. And then after the abatement, this is what the property looks like. So the accounting today that we're seeking, again, no penalties in this. The total amount is $26,855.44. The contractor cost for this particular case was 11,000, just over $11,000. So you don't have to do any math there, but the important number here, $26,855.44. And with that, it's the same recommendations. I have drafted those FCOs or findings, conclusions, and orders for you. So the recommendation here is, I won't read it off, but when you're ready to make it, if you agree, that's what we're asking of you. And with that, any questions you may have?
Any questions?
I have a question through the Chair. What was the time lapse between the first and the second incident?
It's a very good question. So the first one was opened on January of '21 and abated on June of '21, and the second case was opened in September of '21 and finally abated in August of '22.
Same property.
And in fact, this particular property has been a nuisance property for a lot of years. We had a formal case that led to abatement back in 2016, the case was opened. There were two notices and orders issued. One was in January of '17, and a second was in March of '20. I don't think I have my numbers, they're not correct here. But both abatements occurred, one in February of '20 and the second one in July of '20, where we cleaned up the property, the first abatement. The second abatement, we ended up raising or demolishing the home, the dwelling that was there. Very, very similar circumstances, though that particular action led to the Board placing a lien for $165,000, a little over that. So this is essentially the fourth abatement on this property in not too many years.
But it has stayed clean this time, and that's a big deal.
So far. Because they are, they might have done that again this morning.
It's been a couple of weeks.
But for the record, the person that was very much involved in creating the nuisance conditions did pass away in, I believe it was late July of '23. And so there was some action toward the trust and who would be taking that over, but that person's no longer.
Through this Chair.
So the total liens could get up to 150-some thousand?
Well, it'd be, at the end of the day, you're talking 165 plus 27 plus another 20-something. So it's about, yeah, it's going to be in the, over 200. 214, 498, and 18 cents. I was prepared for that question.
Yes. Okay, and you say there's, nobody was here in opposition?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, open the public comment and just for the record, request that anybody with a John Warren Vickers Senior Revocable Living Trust come forward now.
Okay. Opening the public hearing, anybody representing the trust can come forward now, state their case. Seeing none, we're going to close the hearing, and we're going to ask for a motion and then a roll call vote.
All right. Move to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and orders as written, and find the administrative and abatement costs as exhibited in the cost accounting are accurate and reasonable, or that the administrative and abatement costs in the amount of $26,855.44 be placed as a special tax assessment on the property tax. as a special tax assessment on the property tax roll, or that the administrative and abatement costs in the amount of $26,855.44 be recorded as an abatement lien with the county recorder.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we need a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Furor.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
That's all I have to, thank you.
Okay. We're going to go for closed session.
Time certain until 3?
Until 3. Yeah.
Okay, we're taking a break until 3 o'clock. We're going to go back into closed session.
Coming up on yubasutter.live at 3 o'clock today, we'll have the Sutter County Supervisors meeting, and that will be followed by the Marysville Unified School Trustees tonight at 5:30. They have a number of interesting things that I think you would appreciate knowing about, and we'll tell you more about those coming up later. And then following that, at 7 o'clock tonight, we have the Yuba City Unified School District Trustees, which also has a number of things. Both school districts have financial reports that will outline how the city, how the school districts are doing financially, something that is legally required. And they also have some other reports that are of significant interest. That is our 1:30 session with the Yuba County Supervisors, since they're going into closed session later, and we will not be doing anything with them right now. So we are going to conclude this live stream with a little word from our underwriters here, the folks at Plumas Lake Self Storage.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.
We get support from Brent Hasty, Gary Bradford, Chris Branscombe, Neil Goforth, and other folks. You can help too. Just click on the link that is in the text below this video. So join the crowd. Support yubasutter.live and help keep us doing what we're doing here, and even more. We appreciate your support and all of the supporters that have continued to do so in the past. We have other things coming up tonight. Again, live tonight, we have the Sutter County Supervisors at 3 o'clock. That's coming up in just a little bit, just under an hour. We'll start about five minutes till, just to make sure that you're able to log in and get ready to go. Oops, that's not what we're going to do tonight. And then we will have this. This is what happens when you try to push more buttons than you know how to do at the time anyway. Live tonight, Tuesday, 7 o'clock, we'll have Yuba City Unified School Trustees. And at 5 o'clock, we'll have the Marysville Unified, that's 5:30, Marysville Unified. So in order, we'll have Sutter County Supervisors coming up in just under an hour. Marysville Unified Trustees tonight at 5:30. And then Yuba City Unified Trustees at 7 o'clock tonight. You are watching yubasutter.live. I'm Ted Langdale.